Good. I'm gonna ask that we, uh, call the meeting to order. I am going to mute everybody's microphone and ask for you to rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Council members, I will ask you to unmute yourselves. If anybody else can please keep your microphones off, that'll decrease and eliminate a lot of potential background noise. Appreciate your, um, working with us on this. And before we get too far in, I'll remind people that we do have the opportunity for public comments. And if you are interested in having the chance to address council meetings, the comments are limited to three minutes and that you message me in the group chat. Uh, send me your name and I can recognize you. Uh, Mr. Van Doncel, City Attorney.
Uh, Bruce and Troy need to unmute because they're council people.
Bruce and Troy.
Yeah, I didn't have anything to say, so I didn't think it made a difference.
And I'm checking the settings here.
Please unmute yourself.
She's there, Dan, because they're not there.
Alright, participants can cho- can chat directly with the host, that is me. So if there's anybody present that would like the opportunity to address comments. You can free share your name.
I ain't doing it for her at all, it's just, um...
And we're going to, seeing nobody coming up in the chat, there's a couple of things that I'd like to announce as part of Mayor's report to keep people up to date with what's happening. So time of year, I'd like to express a little bit of appreciation and remind people about how much is going on. Uh, obviously, we're not exactly to the end of the year, but it has been a whirlwind. And 2020 year like no other, and I think many of us will agree, hopefully it stays that way. A year like no other, and we don't have a repeat moving forward in the future. Uh, but I'll tell you what, this past week, uh, it's been interesting and there's so much going on. Let me start off by reminding people, if you've not seen the weather forecast, we are potentially going to experience a significant amount of snowfall. And we are going, working as hard as ever to make sure that the roads are clear and that people are able to get around town. But we ask, as always, when there's a snowfall or implement weather, drive safely. Be cautious, be safe, take good times getting where you're going. And where you have sidewalks, please make sure you're still traveling off your sidewalks as well. Because we have many people who actually use walking as a primary method of transportation around the city. It was interesting, last Friday, we had a fire on Clinton Avenue. It just so happened that it was out and about on an evening run, so it happened to come down there. And there's Chief Friedman and his turnout here. And, uh, helping direct traffic in terms of firefighters. We had police officers there as well because they had to redirect traffic to get around. And it was a apartment and multi-unit. And worth noting that, my gosh, less than two weeks before major holiday, and it was contained and put out, and the other two units that do have occupants are able to stay in their dwelling unit. Whereas if the fire had gotten much worse, we could have had a couple of families dealing with real issues through the holidays. Um, and I think people have probably seen there's been a fair amount of coverage. Couple of our departments, both police and our fire department, taking the time in terms of the union membership to do some nice things regarding the holidays and kids in our community. So special appreciation, we've got a lot of people throughout the city who've been working hard all year long. And it's the little things that really make that additional touch, that additional touch, the little things that really make Cortland all the more special, a place to live and grow. Um, so it's nice to be able to look back and say, hey, it's been a rough year. We've had a lot of challenges. But it's more important for us to look back and say, hey, we've had some great things that have occurred. And recognize how we come together and work together to benefit one another. And speaking of, those of you who may be interested in terms of holiday and lakes. I talked to Richard Stock, he's unable to be with us tonight. He's a city legislator, but he's also involved very heavily with the Cortland Community Center. And they have a lighting contest that is going on currently. So if you have a house, then you'd like it to be considered for the competition. Uh, communitynick@yahoo.com, I'm gonna put this in the group chat. Community, the word community, nick, N-I-C-K, at yahoo.com. Make sure I didn't spell that. Did spell correctly. And you have the opportunity to potentially join in and share your cheer with others. And in this day and age, we've been looking for ways for people to enjoy the holidays safely. Every opportunity will be a good one. And this is a good opportunity, I think, where community members can appreciate what your neighbors are doing to help prepare for and enjoy the holidays, especially with a little bit of snowball coming down. Um, Katie Sullivan, were you waving at me?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Katie.
I would like to say, "Special thanks to the DPW for decorating Main Street." That makes it feel more like a normal Christmas, so thank you very much.
Absolutely. Very good.
Uh-huh.
Alright, we are looking for approval from the minutes of December 1st. Do we have a motion to consider filing the minutes as is? John Bennett, wait a second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. Troy, are you voting or do you have a question?
Uh, one thing I want, uh, correction was, it wasn't two, two, the blue bags. I was not in favor of that.
Ah. Thank you. We'll make the adjustment. Anything else regarding the minutes? Hearing none, seeing none, all those voting in favor of accepting the minutes as is and filing them, please say aye.
Aye.
With that adjustment, any opposed? Carries. Um, also have a request for council at the end of tonight's session. If we can adjourn to executive session to discuss contractual matter. Uh, without objections, then we will have a short executive session with potential for action afterwards. Agenda item number one, resolution approves subordination of the city mortgage on, uh, floral ad to facilitate refinancing of existing mortgage pursuant to the recommendation of the city's loan review committed. Motion to consider. Troy Beck with second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. Linda Armstrong is present, if there's any questions. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Carries.
Thank you. Everybody have a happy, safe holiday, and we'll see you next month, first of the year.
You can live it up.
Thank you. Happy holidays, Linda. Number two, resolution about 2021 general fund budget, uh, motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. Bruce Teigler.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting for the war report, so I just have a, uh, sort of a question or some, you know, I'm just, I'm not really sure if I understand this correctly. We have, we're rolling over last year's CHIPS money into this year. And when I talked to Chris, we can't do any more streets than what we were going to do last year. So we were told, okay, well, we can, it's not gonna make a difference if we didn't pay this year because we can do 2020 streets plus 2021 streets. I don't think that's gonna be possible, given all the other things we want the DPW folks to do. So I guess my question is, we have $775,000 budgeted for CHIPS. So if we're not gonna be able to use that all for street paving, are we gonna like contract that out to private sector? Are we, what's, what, is there like animal place? I just, I'm sort of confused with this in terms of what I was told a few months ago versus what I'm hearing now.
Alright, so, uh, in terms of paving with streets, we do typically involve contracting out in particular for larger projects. Um, so it's typically a combination of city employees and a, um, private company. Make sure that we're being as cost efficient as possible. Uh, Nick Doby, can you contribute a little information?
Sure, yeah, I, I don't have the CHIPS figures right in front of me at the moment. I did look at them briefly today. Uh, we, we don't typically, but we do kind of contract some of this work out. Uh, what we do is we have our own paver, uh, we do not have a milling machine, that's always contracted out. Uh, we pave the streets that are the adequate widths for our paver. Uh, and the other streets, we still consider DPW paving those. Um, because we just rent the operator and the actual paver, and then we provide the trucking, the rolling, and all the handwork. So it is a collaborative effort. Uh, to my knowledge, though, uh, Bruce, it was, it wasn't 700 grand, um, that we are allotted for CHIPS. Maybe, I'm not sure if Mac knows off the top of his head, uh, but I, I thought it was more something like, there was work, there was a reduction for 2021 of 20 or 30%. There's no EWR money, I think the emergency weather recovery funds have been totally negated for next year. Uh, and I think so, we are looking at a reduction for next year. Um, and we did, uh, do a little bit of paving work this year. So I, I don't believe the number is seven something, it's more like, Mac, can you help me with that? Is it like five something?
No, it's about six, because I'm budgeting that you, the 20% that was cut from CHIPS at the early part of 2020, if there is federal aid,
Yeah.
that will be, that will be returned in the 2021 CHIPS allotment.
That makes sense.
There is going to be weather in the 2021 budget as of now, as will there be the, the bridge money.
Okay. So I, I guess I go back to my question is, depending on funding, you know, if it looks like, I mean, I looked, I looked at the numbers from, uh, the budget from, uh, November's, so I, I didn't pull those off from today. So maybe that's, there's been a change since then and I didn't realize that, but what I really am wondering about is, the list of streets that we plan to pave in 2021 is the same exact list as 2020, there's no additional streets on there. Is that because we don't anticipate having enough revenue? Or is that because we don't think we can get all that work done, given all the other things we want DPW to do? That's really my question, and I'm just trying to reconcile what I was told a few months ago with what I'm hearing now.
Alright, well, first of all, the, any list of streets to be paved is always tentative. And, um, part of the reason is between, even between now and next April, there's a potential that other streets may deteriorate, we may see infrastructure issues underneath. So similar to the budget is a plan, and sometimes the plan gets adjusted in terms of what streets are to be paved. Uh, there's times where that is adjusted as well. In terms of the number, we can't say seven or eight because different streets are different lengths. Uh, carrying over the streets from 2020 to 21 makes the most sense. And then based upon the projects and everything else that DPW is biting off, we have Chris's best estimate in terms of what we will get done for the 21 paving season. Bearing in mind that we did see, we're anticipating some of the CHIPS money that's been taken away, there was 20% cut coming back. But it would also be imperative of us to plan too much because there's a potential we could see another 20% cut in 21. Nick Doby?
Yeah, the, the other thing to keep in mind is, we do target streets to pave that obviously just need asphalt resurfacing. Uh, but the other thing is we also target, uh, streets that need either sewer or water work. So to, it would behoove us not to, um, you know, spend that pot of money in one season because there's a lot of underground sub-road surface work that also is in conjunction with the, the fixed work.
If I may, if I may add, still on, CHIPS has a zero impact on your budget. Because whatever we recognize or estimate for revenue from CHIPS, we recognize or budget for the same amount of expenditures for CHIPS. So your CHIPS is a zero budget item, so it could be anything in your budget, and it's going to net to zero.
No, it's hard, I'm, that's right, she was, well, Kathy doesn't do that.
CHIPS can also be used for traffic signals, equipment. We, we've entertained, uh, doing a lot of different things that would make a positive impact for residents as far as CHIPS money goes, uh, aside from just simple, uh, asphalt resurfacing.
Okay, well, I guess I'd just like to see an updated plan then, as soon as we can get it, so we know what's going on and, you know. And I, I understand completely that, you know, there may or not be X amount of dollars, and that's really not my question. I understand that part. I'm just gonna go back to what before, you know, these assurances, yeah, don't worry about it. And now I'm hearing, well, maybe we can't do it after all. And I'm just upset with that because we have a lot of streets that need to be repaired. So, um, if you, if I can just get, we can just get some kind of idea of what, what the plan is versus, you know, considering how much money we're gonna have, I, I can live with that.
Okay, I'll see, I'll see what we can put together. Normally, we do the street evaluations in the spring. Um, but I, I feel like that we probably could take, uh, the, the prior year's evaluations and at least have an idea, uh, or a starting point for that matter.
Yeah, that's, that was the information I was given a few weeks ago, was that they were just gonna, they were just gonna take 2020's list and roll it into 2021. So if something's happened, put in the process, as the mayor points out, that something comes up, we didn't realize and has to change. I, I understand that, I get that all completely. I, I just, we have to pave streets, folks. Our streets are not in grocery shape, and if we, you know, we just can't afford to keep letting stuff slide. They're not gonna pave themselves, and not gonna get any better.
Agreed. Which is why we talked about the signage paving. Obviously, it's a little more runoff, but it would contribute to the infrastructure and the paving.
Okay, I'm sad, that's why I just had to, just wanted to ask those questions.
Very good. Further discussion, agenda item number two, the 21 annual budget. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries, eight of them. Agenda item number three, resolution set forth that the 2021 general fund tax levy shall be $9,115,000. This is a 1% increase over the previous year. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Katie Sullivan, discussion.
Would've been nice if, uh, we could've gotten that below the 1%. Not, not quite sure where we're gonna end up regarding sales tax by the end of the year, but I understand there's a lot, rest of shoppers out there that are, uh, doing online, online shopping. Um, I'm sure that that's gonna play into, uh, uh, the numbers by the end of the year.
It's called retail therapy, Tom. But, uh, according to Mac, the sales taxes are down again, so we should, we need to shop more.
Well, don't tell my wife that.
Texting her right now.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Carries. Number four, resolutions authorize the mayor to enter to the agreement with the City of Cortland Fire Department Board of Engineers for volunteer firefighting services to commence January 1 and ending December 31, 2021, an amount of $35,000. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Chief Friedman for, uh, getting this on the calendar here. Every year, this would come up, I don't know, in March or April, we would bring it up.
Early.
In the past, Carlos or myself would say, why isn't this on the calendar? And then we would totally forget. So Chief, thank you so much.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Carries. Agenda item number five, resolution recognizes appropriate tracks for $1,605.35 from count 362042701 to count 362054505. Motion to consider. Uh, Jackie Chapman, second. Tom Michaels, discussion.
Uh, Captain Tenka, if he's there. There's, uh, those charges of what things cost, are they gonna be charged back to the property owners?
Yes, everything in that line is charged back to the property owners.
Okay, just wanted to double check, I figured it.
And that revenue line is all from the property owners, that, that's just late payments of previous year's expenses. So in theory, that line should, should always be in at zero. And, um, hopefully in the future, it's gonna be very close to that moving forward.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And agenda item number six, resolution authorize the mayor to enter to a contract with Cortland County SPCA for dog control services, emergency services, and sheltering services at an annual rate of $77,321.76. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Troy Beck with. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Agenda item number seven, resolution authorizes the mayor to execute purchase agreement with Contento Properties LLC for purchase, um, sale of the city-owned property located at 119 Pendleton Street for cash payment of $65,000, and for the mayor to execute deeds and any and all necessary transfer documents to complete said sale. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Tom Michaels, discussion.
No, we've been, we've been paying up all this property for a long time now, uh. We finally have a, a cash buyer.
I just wanna, uh, take the opportunity to disclose that I currently serve on the Cortland Reuse Steering Committee. Anthony Contento also serves on the Cortland Reuse Steering Committee. It's a volunteer board, um, or steering committee, so, uh, I was informed that I should just disclose that.
Very good, thank you, Captain McCarthy.
John, please unmute.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And agenda item number eight, adopt the local law, end up, approving a local law to adopt the method for the abandonment of streets and highways in the city of Cortland. Motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second. John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Number nine, resolution authorizing the implementation and funding of $250,000 in a state Marchiselli program aid eligible transportation federal aid project, multiple pedestrian signal upgrades to fully fund the local share of federal and state aid eligible and ineligible project costs and appropriating funds therefore. Motion to consider. Uh, Bruce Teigler, second. Tom Michaels, discussion.
Did I have something to add?
Uh, Mr. Teigler?
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, I understand this was written maybe a couple, a year or so ago at least, and, uh, Nick Doby was one major, uh, primarily responsible for writing this proposal, getting this quarter per million dollars, and I just wanna say thank you, I appreciate that. It's, you know, that's, it's a lot of work and, uh, filling out the forms, et cetera. So it's great we have people in the, and I notice that different departments have, seem to have somebody with that skillset and looks like next DPW, so, well, thanks, Nick, good work.
I, I don't know if I really have the skillset, I think it's after that.
Well, that'll work for me, Nick, better, better luck in there, Lucky.
Right, uh, the, the quick and dirty on this is, is this was supposed, the work was supposed to be, uh, performed
Oh, there they are, okay.
And I think due to COVID, it was just moved to 2021, so the project has not changed. The funding is still a hundred. Nothing on that has changed besides the year, so we need an updated contract. Um, and that is three intersections that will be upgraded.
Right. Well, good work.
Yes, totally, yes.
Very good. Further conversation. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Agenda item number 10, resolution defer all purchases of capital assets, specifically vehicles, equipment, and machinery that are appropriated into 21 adopted general fund water and wastewater budgets until, uh, most sooner than April 1st, unless otherwise approved by common council. Motion to consider. John Bennett, Bill Carpenter, discussion.
Over my bed, just on the edge of it, and I did take some scary lights.
All those in favor, say aye.
Wait, I'm there, sorry.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Agenda item number 11, resolution include in the 2021 tax levy assessment for stormwater system preservation, maintenance, repair, revaluation, and reconstruction at a rate of 35.2 cents per foot of street address frontage of each property allocated within the city of Cortland, provided 2021 actual. Jackie Chapman, second. Katie Sullivan, discussion.
Um, there's, there's a lot of interference from somebody's microphone, and I'm having trouble hearing some of what you're saying, so can we all kind of double check who's, who it's coming from?
Alright, we can double check.
Troy, on my screen, there we go, on my screen, you were the one lighting up, so, thanks.
And make sure we are unmuting when it's time for a vote.
Yes, what it's, okay, so, I, I guess this is a good time for me to ask this question. I understand being unmuted when it's time for a vote, but we're all having these Zoom meetings and most of us at our homes, and there's a lot of other things going on. Is there a reason we can't be muted when we're having discussions that don't entail us having to say something?
I think that was just because people were, if, muting and unmuting was more awkward than just sitting silently. So I, you know, maybe it can be to each their own.
Let's, uh, let's, let's hold this conversation off for the end of the agenda because we do have an item on the floor.
Okay.
So it's number 11.
Right.
Discussion regarding agenda item number 11. Uh, Troy?
Let's have to, uh, uh, is that gonna be a public hearing on this?
Do we need to, are you talking about a separate public hearing? And you gotta hit the spacebar, Troy.
Yeah, do we have to have a public hearing on this?
What, what, what item are we on?
I don't, I'm.
Stop it, who's talking?
Hey, let's, uh, try to maintain here. So the 35.2 cents per linear foot in terms of stormwater runoff. And we did have the public hearing in terms of the budget, which I believe was appropriate in terms of the fee as well.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify, that's all, thank you.
Bruce?
I, I support this because I know what we're trying to do with this, and it's needed, the infrastructure has to be replaced. I don't think there's. I don't think there's any argument on that. Um, just for reference, Matt, I don't, I know you told me this and I had forgotten this. So, if you don't, you can't remember off the top of your head, that's okay. Go back and find it. Do you remember what the average cost was going to be to property owners? Or what, it didn't seem like it was going to be horribly onerous. Do you remember what that is? Just as a point of reference.
I think it was somewhere around $24. I could look up some past emails. Uh, the same question was asked last week, but you weren't here. So, I think it's around $24. But as you guys continue on today, I'll, I'll look through some emails.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. That, that'll work for me.
And, uh, also Bruce, uh, what was, uh, I'm not sure whether you missed it or not, was that cornered properties will only be measured for the, uh, the side of the property the, uh, the actual house address is related to.
Right. Thanks, yeah. Thanks for reminding me. I did, I did see the email or something on that, so thanks, yeah. So, if that comes up, I'll, I remember that too. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Yep, you're welcome.
I think it was also like an average, like a 70-foot front would be around $25, $26.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. That's good enough. Thanks, folks.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Carrieds? Agenda item number 12. Resolution authorize the offering through December 31st of 2021, a retirement incentive to any eligible police officer or firefighter employed by the city on the date of this resolution. A motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
No, I, hold it, hold it. I think you had some discussion there, Mayor. I thought I saw Troy's hand go up.
Troy?
Um, first of all, I don't think this should go through at this point. Uh, number one, I don't think it's fair for the other departments within the city not being offered this by any means. Second of all, with what's going on with the COVID and our financial situation, I just don't think that this is at all affordable to the city or the city, you know, it's not right for the city's taxpayers. I, it, worst case scenario, I think it should be postponed so we can get some accurate numbers. Um, all the departments, especially the ones that you want, you know, that we're talking about here between peace and fire, it's, I don't think it could possibly ever happen if there's roughly three to four or five guys per department that take this incentive program. And then to try to replace these people, I don't, do the math. I just don't think it's affordable. Um, we gotta replace these people. We gotta send them out for training. So, we send them out for training for up to a year. If we didn't even get anybody to take to training, that's going to raise our overtime up because these people are going to have to cover their shifts. Um, there's people already out on COVID. Um, I just, I don't think it's a wise thing.
All right, so I'll ask Matt to jump in. When we did our budget planning, this was one of the things that came forward is actually an opportunity for our cost savings. And it's not something that we can do annually. It's not, it's not a midterm solution. However, the fact that we've had such a rough year financially in 2020 and the potential for that to carry over to 2021, that this is us being optimistic about what will happen uh, towards the end of '21 and into '22 when the economy is going to strengthen. You're going to see improvement. Uh, so this is similar to the furloughs that we did this past year. Sort of a holding of the breath so that we can move forward. And in terms of the cost analysis, um, this looked like it's a viable option. It's consistent with what other governmental entities have done, including our county and some others throughout the state. Uh, Matt, is there anything that you'd like to add?
I'm just bringing up the email, uh, this one out, uh, at the beginning of November. And I'll get you the exact numbers, Troy, because.
Right.
When we, when we netted the $10,000 against the cost savings, it netted out to a net reduction in the police department of $89,000 and in the fire department, $82,000. And that's factoring in the differential in salaries, workers' comp, and all the benefits taken, plus training.
So, to the other point regarding, uh, consistency or parity between departments, um, I have reached out to one of our department heads and asked him to share with the union for that department that if there is a desire for a similar agreement in terms of other departments, the city is open to sitting down and discussing that. But as we know, our largest expenditure in the city is personnel. Uh, there are some reasons why some departments or some employees works a little bit better in terms of cost efficiency. And in terms of skill set in some other departments, it might be a lot more difficult to do something like this because we have some departments where the employee's skill sets are specific and, um, might make it difficult or similar offer. But the city, from where I sit, we are willing to have that conversation with other bargaining units. Uh, Phil Carpenter?
Brian, can I ask Chief Catalano and Freeman if, if there are guys that jump on this deal, how does that, public safety-wise, you know, police department, police officers gone for 12 months, how does that do? And how does that with their departments as to not having enough officers out there and not having those firemen out there to fight the fires? I'm just wondering about that.
Catalano, Bruce?
Yeah, we do have minimum staffing requirements, uh, based on the contract. So, uh, even though the numbers of employees would be down, we'd never run into a situation where, at least through overtime, that we can't fill the shifts. If it was long, long-term, I would, I would have a great concern for burnout if we couldn't get people replaced. Uh, but I, I think, um, in the short term, we should be able to handle it. And I don't, at this point, I don't see a big departure, to be honest with you. Um, we'll, we'll see how it shakes out. I think we're going to lose a couple in the beginning of the year. And then as the year goes on, some others might contemplate it. Uh, with so many changes at the police department, it's hard to say that this is, this incentive is going to make any difference on that end. But I know what you're saying, Bill, and, um, how many we've been down, we've always been able to fill our shifts. And I would hope in life.
I have a question, Mayor.
Uh, Bruce?
I don't have a question so much as, uh, I guess how I feel about this. I, I had the same questions that Troy and Bill had in terms of how, you know, this is going to work. And the chief says in the short term, we can probably cover that. Typically, I get the savings that you usually gain from incentives. It's not this year, next year. I get that. And typically, I'd be in favor of, of this program. The reason I'm not in favor of it right now, Mayor, is because we have folks probably that have already decided they're going to retire. And, and, and God bless them. They deserve it. And I wish them, you know, all the best with retirement. We have other folks probably that have decided, well, I, you know, I have another year, you know, the two-year, whatever, and I don't, I don't feel like retiring. And there might be some guys, folks, I shouldn't say guys, that would be with it, that are on the fence. And in the middle of a pandemic, I don't believe the best time to add some kind of incentive to get people to retire that are on the fence is in the middle of a pandemic. I think we want to keep our most experienced staff, people, uh, um, employees at least through, you know, the first six months of 2021. So, I don't, I don't want to give them this. I want somebody to stay. I don't want somebody that's on the fence to say, "Well, you know what? I think I'm going to go because I have this incentive." I want them to stay. We didn't, we don't know what the next seven months are going to bring. I get that the vaccine is here and everybody thinks that this pandemic is over. It's not. It's not even close to being over. You know, even, even Dr. Fauci says we'll be lucky if, if we're through the woods six months from now, at the end of the second quarter. So, we still have a lot of unknowns and I want to keep our experienced personnel helping us. And maybe we can do something differently next year. But, uh, I'm not in favor of this philosophically because I don't want to lose experienced people. And the people on the fence, I want them to stay. So, that's my rationale.
Understood. And, uh, based upon the information that Matt just shared, the potential for $180,000 cost savings for the city. Uh, if we are to not do this, then we need to have a discussion about, do we increase tax another 2%? Or where do you cut?
Well, I think, hold it. I don't think you can use that exact figure because there's going to be additional overtime net to, to meet. If people retire, you're going to have to have overtime costs. And I don't know if we can get into this. We don't know what that's going to be. So, I don't know that you can say flat out it's a, it's a X number of savings. We won't know what that is until next year when we figure out what the overtime has cost us.
Is there another number you want to shoot for?
I'm not in favor of this. That's, that's all there is to it. And I, I just, I think it's a little disingenuous to say, "All right, Matt, they want to save X number of dollars." Well, we, we may or we may not. I, I'm all for savings. In a normal year, I would say yes. Right now, I'm for the experienced people. Stick around, help us do this thing.
All right, Matt, and I'll put you on the spot. Matt, what's your anticipation in terms of the budget if we do not do this? You're muted right now, Matt.
I'll have to find, along with the chiefs, Freeman, and Catalano, we will have to go back in and look at the police budget and the fire budget and try to pull about $80,000 out of each one of them.
Uh, well, see, I had a hand from Phil Carpenter and then, Bill, if you're, Bill, you've got the floor, and then Katie, and then John Bennett.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just want to make sure that is there, is a real possibility cuts and stuff if you, if we don't meet that, uh, number. You know what I'm saying?
There would be a very real possibility because you have a balanced budget right now. If you pull, if you increase any of the expenses, either other expenses have got to come out or you have to increase revenue. And this was done in conjunction with, with the two chiefs. This is not something that I concocted and did on my own unilaterally.
Yep.
Katie, still a minute.
It's my understanding that they would not retire at once. And that we've heard from Chief Catalano that he doesn't think that, that there would be a large number of people retiring. I wonder if we can hear from Chief Freeman about the fire department. Does he anticipate a lot of people retiring from the fire department?
I'm looking there, chief.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi there. So, I echo almost everything that Chief Catalano said. We have, um, a few people that wouldn't meet the requirements and eligibility for this incentive. Obviously, they're senior members of the department. I mean, there's no other way around that. Um, some have expressed, uh, have had discussions with me about it. But again, I fall back to there was no guarantees. And when we even started talking about this, there was no guarantees of any of it. So, we, uh, I've had some people approach me about it. Um, and I don't believe that if I had two or three, maybe. Um, and I don't think they'll be the first of the year. I think it'll be more toward the middle of the year. Um, but again, I, I can't answer any more than that, really. Um, obviously, if, if, if I lose three people all at once to work around, uh, the fire academy and training and the months it had, what has to be, we're a little different than I think the police department. We're able to put people on staff that have some, uh, fire ground training. Um, and through our training officer, we can do some of that. So, for the immediacy, we can put them on shift with a senior firefighter and we can use them. Um, but eventually, they have to go to the fire academy and will face the same problems Chief Catalano does. Um, it's backfilling overtime, which we can do with our minimum staffing. So, they, it's always a challenge, um, but we're asked to entertain this discussion and that's what's presented for you tonight. So, that's where we're at.
There, um, my understand, my, my understanding is that, uh, whoever leaves through retirement, that we at the police department will be able to fill those positions with a lower salaried person. And that's what's going to be important because we only have one, maybe two academies for the whole year that last, um, six months long. If we're not able to fill those positions by the time an academy starts, we miss out on a whole year and it'd take even longer to have an experienced police officer working. So, if we lose, and we lose somebody to retirement, we have to have the ability to replace that person with an entry level. Um, if our budgets have to be cut and we're told we can't do that, then we're really going to be behind the eight ball.
Okay.
So, so what happens if we offer this incentive and the people don't retire?
Well, first of all, there's only a certain number of people that are eligible. It's not the whole department.
Right.
And, and from what I'm seeing, we're not going to have a mass exodus. Could that change? Um, maybe, but that's not, I'm seeing right now, at least not at the beginning of the year. Um, so, it, it will be a hit on our department because we'll have to spend more overtime to fill the shifts. But in my experience, uh, hiring an employee with the benefits usually costs more than the overtime does.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, these numbers that we're talking about saving, we don't know that we're going to save that for sure anyhow then because it's all up in the air in terms of whether people want to take the incentive and retire. And some, some people that are on the fence probably will. Some people that have already determined they want to work for another year, they might not. They, so, so even these numbers are not sure that we're going to save them. I guess at that point.
That's no different than any other number in your budget.
Exactly. So, okay.
And if they come true, then you're going to have a budget gap. If sales tax falls below what we budgeted, the property tax collections don't come in, every number in your budget is an estimate.
Right. That's, I, that's what I thought.
Further discussion? Troy? Michael Paul.
Further question, um, I guess probably more to Matt than anybody. Where are we forming this, where are we going to pull this money out of to pay these guys?
It's net in the salaries. So, you're going to pull, you're going to increase your salaries by $10,000 for, right now, it's estimated three people, both departments. And you're going to recoup that with the salary differential when you rehire. So, we're working off the net numbers.
Uh, John Bennett had a hand up earlier. John?
Uh, well, first off, a couple of my questions were asked by Katie. So, I do not need to go there. But I will say, this has been out there for a couple of months. Matt first brought this up a couple of months ago. Uh, it's been out there. The information's been out there. Um, I've, there's emails coming in from anybody who we count, they're questioning it. So, no offense to everybody else on council, but maybe you should have done your homework and asked these questions before we get to the last meeting of the year where we have to pass a budget. Okay? Again, no offense, council members, but it's been out there. Matt has talked about it, so. And as of now, I don't think we'd be looking at maybe more than two per department. Maybe three. Maybe, and as the year goes on, since the year goes on, the amount of the offer is less. That information has been out so good. That's my say.
So, how, how we replace the experience?
You're always having somebody retire who's got experience. Somebody always steps up with the experience, okay? It's as simple as that, Bruce. You retired at the school principal, you were replaced with somebody who learned and experienced. It's the same with every job there is. Somebody in the police department retires. For example, sometime this coming year, Chief Catalano's going to retire. Whoever replaces him has a lot of that experience, the lower and more. And then somebody moves up into the next position and gains that experience. It's all the way through on every job and every department in the city. experience. All the way through on every job in every department in the city. You gain the experience by doing the job and learning from others.
Okay, I get that, John. My point is, I don't want to give, and I'll stop with this. You can call the board if you want, Mayor. Every year, there's going to be people that want to retire. I get that. And you have to just deal with that. And you wish them well. And everything moves on and life goes on. I get that completely. This is not a typical year. We're in the middle of a pandemic. I do not want somebody that's on the fence to say, okay, I guess I'm going to retire because I can get X number of dollars, which makes sense to me. They would do that. I want them to stay. We still have a lot of unsolved problems to figure out in the next several months. And I don't, I don't want to have, not have full departments because it'd be a while to bring them up to full staff. And then we do have the full staff, they won't have any kind of working knowledge of what's going on last year. So I think that, maybe I didn't make myself completely clear in terms of why I can't support this. The money wasn't really the big thing. The money was thrown at me as all these savings we're going to have. I just want to make the point that we don't know for sure we're going to have those savings. So that's not a, that's not a given. That's an estimate. But it is a given that we're going to lose experienced people.
Uh, Bill Carpenter?
To John's point, John is right. He's, you know, when I left Portland PD, somebody in my shoes is the child abuse sex investigator. I mean, it does, that is, that is what happens. It's a natural course of leaving the job. Somebody with that kind of, you know, experience leaves, somebody else lose, learns the new trait of being that investigator. So it's the same, same thing with every position.
Uh, Captain Parthi?
To John's other point, I think that we have had a number of conversations about this to date. As a matter of fact, at the last meeting, I think we gave the intent that we were planning on moving forward with this. I certainly understand the concerns and the hesitation about the institutional knowledge that could be lost with turnover. But I do think that there's reasons why this is being offered. And I think that both from a budget standpoint and from conversations that have been had with staff, it's important to continue on the course that we've set. And, you know, when you do have turnover, sometimes you get innovation and new ideas. So yes, you lose some institutional knowledge. But I think everybody, all employees are going to bring value to the table.
And Tom Michaels?
Just, just a, and a little bit of insight on this. I've let it know my, my company that I do plan on retiring in 2021. And you might want to start preparing now instead of waiting until I get my final notice. And my managers keep telling me that you're not going anywhere. But the footside of that is, you know, upper management is saying, well, we can, we can hire two engineers for the price of paying you. So, you know, there's always a footside to each side. But, you know, we've known for a while now that certain, certain firefighters are going to be retiring. I gotta say that I don't plan on retiring in the wintertime because who wants to sit around and watch it snow? So most retirees are going to retire in the springtime, is my best guess. So we've got a little bit of time to prepare for this. That's, that's my take, Ken. But I've certainly given at least six months' notice that I do plan on retiring sometime before the middle of next year.
Council, further discussion. Hearing none. We'll call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Posed. Uh, two against, Titler and Beckwood. And I appreciate the robust discussion. We, as has been pointed out, this has been discussed and it's okay for us not always agree. Next year's budget, there's a lot of questions heading into it. We're not the only agency or entity, government or otherwise, that is dealing with challenges. But we've been very, well, we've been very capable so far. And I am optimistic that we are going to continue to be more than just capable. Agenda item number thirteen, resolution authorize purchase of up to ten thousand dollars in COVID-19 testing equipment materials, test city essential employees and encumber expenditures in 2020 general plan under account A1010-5415 double O. Motion to consider, John Bennett. Second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. Let me give better depth in terms of this. So as cases have continued to decline in our county, and we have had some instances in terms of city employees, we have a need to make sure that we are able to continue to provide services. Can't provide services without evil. And if we are getting people and if we have people who are becoming infected and then potentially infecting their coworkers or infecting people from the general public, that's a problem. So we are looking and we've had discussions. We're pursuing up to three different avenues in terms of how we can most effectively do this. There are conversations with the county that have been ongoing for over a month in terms of potentially collaborating on state equipment that is in the county's possession. Those conversations are continuing. But right now, we do have the opportunity to jump in with SUNY Courtland on the pool testing that they have going on at Upstate Medical. I view this as being an important step because if we do this, it's going to be simple and efficient in terms of what is required from the city for testing. And although his camera is not on, I'm pretty sure Chief Freeman is lacing right now because it may not be quite as simple or it'll be a little more time consuming for he and his department. But, you know, as we're going forward, this will allow us the opportunity to make sure that our employees where they need to be, which in turn allows us to protect the general public. And anybody flown? Probably not recently. But you see those little placards? And they say, when the air thing drops down and the mask drops down, if you've got a kit, make sure you put your own on before you put one on your kid. And I'm not calling people kids, but if we're not taking care of the people that take care of others, we're not going to be able to take care of others. We're straight forward. So with this resolution, we would be able to jump in and we would be able to sustain testing for approximately the next four to five weeks, which in particular with the anticipated problems that may result from the holidays and choices that people make in terms of gatherings. The next four weeks, I think, are absolutely crucial for us in terms of testing and protecting everybody. All right. Floor is open for discussion. John Bennett?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, why don't you fill council in on basically the cost of the grand, eventually how that could be recovered?
True. We are optimistic, cautiously optimistic, that when all is said and done, be it the state or the federal level, when they make decisions about how to reimburse people, government entities, not people, with regard to COVID, that this is potentially reimbursable. And the numbers there, John, are still kind of up in the air, but we are tracking everything in terms of expenditures. Uh, Mr. Titler?
I mean, I support this. It makes so much sense. But you did catch my attention. I hadn't thought about this. Are we going to be doing some pool testing then? Is that, is that what, is that part of this? I mean, we're going to like take all of our one department and have a pool test? And then if that comes back positive, then we go out and test? I mean, is the, do we have some details in the plan or is that also to be worked out? And we'd be testing people like once a week, once a month?
Yeah. So conversation has been about weekly testing and the pool testing has nothing to do with slimming. But what will happen is employees who are being tested, basically it looks like a large Q-tip and a test tube. And you take the Q-tip and you got to rub it around the inside of your mouth for approximately fifteen seconds, put it into the test tube. We need to have an employee that will take, and it's typically about a dozen of the samples combined in that. That will go to Upstate. And at Upstate Medical, they will run one test on twelve. If it comes up negative, we're good. If it comes up positive, then they will test the twelve individuals. The test at Upstate was ranked by the FDA as the best saliva test and the sixth best test of any kind of test for COVID in the world. So it's gotten a lot of props and we're very fortunate that SUNY Courtland has been able to work with us and potentially help us out with getting this connection.
Great. Okay.
In terms of the logistics, the day to day, we were actually having a conversation about that today. Hey, we've got a different shift. We've got employees in at different times, but there will be some responsibility on department heads as well to help us make sure that appropriate personnel are being tested.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Very good. Katie, do you have a hand up?
I did. I was just wondering in what way this is in conjunction with SUNY Courtland. But it's not that important. We can move along.
Well, that's, honestly, that's where the idea came, well, not came from, but this is the testing that SUNY has been doing through the fall of semester.
Right.
And with the majority of students gone, as an employee at SUNY, I've been through it. I'm actually going again tomorrow. But there is a increase in capacity, meaning without having seven thousand students, or even the number of tests that they were a month ago, which means there's an increase in terms of capacity for Upstate Medical to handle. And they are, Upstate Medical has been working feverishly with, maybe that's the wrong word, with different entities, both SUNY's and I believe they are very involved up in Onondaga County, working heavily with the county.
But it's not SUNY staff testing our people. It's just that they created a gap so that there's space now for our people to get tested by our people and then take it up there for Upstate to analyze.
Yep. So SUNY Upstate is the place where the test was developed and then they started sharing with SUNY's. And the potential to collaborate with SUNY Courtland went forward and we saw this as a golden opportunity. And hey, it's a side benefit to having a SUNY in our yard.
That's true.
Our people, when I say, Chief Freeman, his department has done yeoman's work in terms of trying to help navigate through this. And as I said, we're still pursuing other ways to test. And we're trying to figure out how we can not just test city employees, but are there things that we can do for the general public at large? However, we need to take this first step. And just as a reminder, this is not something we normally do in any way, shape or form. But kudos to Chief and his staff for being willing to consider this and, you know, help us figure out how to make it work.
Great.
I agree. And we'll keep council updated as we progress if it's voted upon successfully. So at this point, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda item number fourteen. We have two administrative personnel in the police department who are planning to retire. And the dates are Diane Ferri, F E R R I, on January twenty second and Nancy on February twenty seventh of 2021. And then the desire is to be able to bring both people back on a part-time basis. And we're complimentary shifts. And until the transition to new administrative personnel is considered and we are comfortable with these smooth operations within the police department. As part-time employees, it would be commensurate hourly compensation without benefits. So this is a discussion item. Council discussion, questions? John Bennett? John, your microphone is muted.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank Diana and Nancy for the effort that they put in. Very well appreciated. Plus, I don't know about Nancy. I do know Diane was over at the county before she came to the city too. And then even more, my appreciation for them willing to come back and work part-time to help with the transition. Again, to, we do have very, very number of excellent city employees who do really care. And that right there shows you. You've got two ladies here who could walk off into the sunset, but they really care about the department they work in and they want to make sure they can help out.
Agreed. Bill?
I've always the same as John did. I worked with both of them. They do have a skillset that, you know, to train someone in that skillset is very important to the City of Courtland and the City Police Department.
And on a related note, probably more for the general public, I believe everybody on council is aware, but there is a potential shifting in terms of personnel which would result in a decrease in staffing. So all the more important to make sure that we are not losing that institutional knowledge going forward. Are there any questions for the chief or? Very good. Uh, agenda item number fifteen, resolution authorize mayor and Department of Finance and Administration to extend carryover rollover vacation time accrual from twenty to twenty-one in response to the impact of COVID-19 pandemic. Such carryover will respect continuing staff responsibilities while recognizing the need for each employee to have the opportunity for vacation and spend time with family to recharge appropriately. Following departments and our union membership shall be in guidelines and this includes the SDIU, including employees from statis and Matisse and CSEA, youth bureau and wastewater. So resolution, we have a motion to consider, John Bennett. Second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. To expand on this a little bit further, so we've got employees that were furloughed and did not have the opportunity to take time. And we have employees that were here and were working very intensely and intently and did not have the opportunity to take time. So we're in a situation where we've asked a lot of our employees, right thing to do is to make sure that we are giving them the opportunity to take their vacation time next year.
Hey, Mayor, I noticed that, I noticed the CSEA is just, you know, they're only going to be allowed to roll over one week and everybody else has any new vacation time. Is there a specific reason why that has a definite amount of time?
Summertime is very busy for the DPW.
I'm sorry, right?
Because it's very busy in the summertime for the DPW and they can't afford to have too many vacations at one time. So that's, that's why. And because they're encouraged to use more time between now and the end of the year.
Okay. That's, that's why, I understand why. As DPW, are they all CSEA?
CSEA.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Okay, that was fifteen. Number sixteen, COVID-19 in response. I'm going to move from the word response to plans. And I believe it should be up. Bruce Adams and myself were interviewed by the Courtland Voice yesterday. And the topic of discussion was the wastewater testing that the city has been doing since the summer. and the topic of discussion was the wastewater testing that the city has been doing since the summer. And one of the things that we have done is we have placed that information on the city's webpage. It's a little bit tricky because there's not a straight line. There's a lot of variables that have to be essentially taken into account. How much did it rain? How much did it snow? Is there more water coming through that may change how the tests may read? But basically what the wastewater treatment plant has been doing has been looking for signs of the virus as water comes through. And testament to Bruce, he figured out how, when he looks at the numbers and looking at a couple of other factors, it can be considered in a lot of cases a predictor of what the caseload might look like. And over the last several weeks, he's gotten the wastewater results and it has shown increases. And then lo and behold, the following week, it is starting to show up in terms of the community testing. So we see this as a valuable tool for the public. It is on the city webpage, going to continue to update it weekly. And if we are effective in terms of timeframe, bear in mind that sometimes there's changes, but we should be hopefully posting this information on Thursdays. And every Thursday, being able to push out the information about what the wastewater testing shows might help people get a better understanding of what to expect. The big ask for everybody in our community, we have a big ask that I think everybody needs to consider. What are your plans for the holidays? And some of us have already made plans. Some of us already have those thoughts. Some of us, maybe it's, well, I'm just going to do what I usually do. This would not be a good year for some of us to do what we usually do. And I will give myself as an example. So I have a family. I've got a stepsister that lives in New Jersey. I have a brother that lives downstate. Father and stepmom are snowbirds and they come back for a couple of days around the holidays. We have made the conscious decision that we are not going to get together for the holidays. And the real, the reason, as everybody knows, is because we want to reduce the risk of the spread of COVID-19. So my brother and the five is his family, my stepsister, the five and her family, and then stuff. There's four people who we're very close with, but we're going to make the decision to not gather because of living room spread. And everybody has heard, living room spread, it's not going to the restaurants or department stores, the grocery store. It's having people over. We're going to somebody else's house and you spend time and feel safe. But a large percentage of the cases in our county and in our state are from living room spread. So the ask for the public, we all need to make decisions about how we are going to spend the holidays. And please, plan appropriately so that you are reducing the risk of living room spread. So for example, my family, we will use Zoom. We're going to use the internet and we will see each other. And we will plan a physical gathering next year when it's safer to do so. But knowing where we're at with cases and knowing what happened after Memorial Day, there was an increase two to three weeks later. Fourth of July increased two to three weeks later. Labor Day, there was an increase two to three weeks later. Halloween and yes, Thanksgiving, bear in mind, look where we are. We're seeing our largest caseload, over 300 current cases in Cortland County. And we are less than three weeks out from Thanksgiving. It's these small gatherings that can be dangerous. So plan appropriately if you are getting together with people. It may feel weird to wear masks in public, but wear masks. If the weather cooperates, maybe meet outside, someplace where you can be socially distant. Wear cars and you yell at each other from cars. Most people are used to yelling at relatives over the holidays anyway. But we need to plan appropriately. And I am confident that if we plan appropriately, that is our best opportunity, not just through the religious holidays, but also New Year's Eve. If we plan appropriately, we are going to stand a good chance of reducing the total cases that we have in our county. And that is going to be crucial. Talk about life and death. We can talk about businesses. We can talk about people whose health after they've been sick might not be as good as it was before. And we can talk about kids and the ability for our school-aged children to go back safely to school, knowing that the risk of other students potentially being exposed is minimal. This is a tough ask. I get that. But when we think about the holidays and we think about giving and we think about what we can do to show love and appreciation for our neighbors, for who we value and treasure, this is the greatest gift we can get. It's probably the toughest sacrifice for many of us, but that also shows how valuable it is for us to do things for ourselves, for our families, for our neighbors. And in an instance, a year like this, we're all family. We gotta take care of each other. So please, plan appropriately around the holidays and have those discussions now. Make those plans now and then hold yourself to those plans. Council, further discussion regarding COVID or what else we are facing regarding testing?
I like gift cards and money if you just want to pass the word out there. I'll see if I can't get word to Sam.
Should we mail them directly to you then? So we don't have any kind of contact? Is that what you're saying, Tom?
Yes.
Tom, that's the line of the night.
I thought we should end this on a positive note since, you know, Christmas is just around the corner. And the mayor certainly hit the nail on the head. Please, everyone be safe and be reasonable about this. I know firsthand that the flu is also out there right now. And with that coming with the virus, that is certainly going to hit people hard. So please, be safe and wear masks and social distance. And we'll all get through this.
Get your flu vaccine.
Yes. Already done.
Now, I did ask council for an executive session. Last statement I'd like to make before that. Tom, thank you for putting us in a positive direction. I want to share, you know, being behind the scenes and working with department heads and city employees, profound and deep appreciation for what has happened over the past year. In particular, you know, when there's cracks in any organization, when there's stress, those cracks have the opportunity to become larger or small problems to be magnified. And the way that employees throughout the city have come together, worked together, worked for the public in every department, in every way imaginable, has been nothing short of stellar. And I have a very, as I said, deep and profound appreciation for all of our employees because it's been a challenging year for us all. And with the additional issues and challenges that have been put forth in terms of decisions that I have made and asked council to support, everybody has continued to work and work effectively. We should all be very thankful for the people that we have working for the City of Cortland. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I'd like to ask if we can entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual matters, John Bennett? And do we have a second? Katie Solman? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have opened up a breakout room and I believe that council members should be able to join. Or do I have to assign? Oh, I guess tell me I have to assign. There is a potential that we will be taking action afterwards, so if anybody wants to hang around. Otherwise, be safe and have a happy holiday. All right, is everybody gone? Troy, did I miss you? Or did you disappear? Jackie Chapman, can you join?
I didn't, no.
All right, if you look up on the dots on your... You got it? Right now, there we go. Nope? Do you know how to go?
I'm not sure how to join.
All right, you see three dots? When you hover your mouse over your picture?
Yes.
All right, when you click on that? Yes, no?
I don't see any, what am I supposed to see? Sorry, I'm not sure how I'm supposed to...
All right, hang on, I'm trying to...
Oh, breakout room.
There you go.
Okay, breakout room, okay. Join, got it.
That worked. See you in a minute. And it's telling me the host muted everybody. Who is that and why would they do such a thing? So last, counsel on your back, you need to unmute yourselves, please, and thank you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Am I missing one? Troy, get lost. There you are. I see you, Troy. One, two, three, four, five, six.
I think we're missing Katie.
Yeah, where'd Katie go? She's still in the room. I don't see her. Kat McCarthy, Rick, Troy. Katie Soliman, can you hear me? I think she exited, exited. Man, and this has been so much better than when we had these in person because I always lose at least one of y'all to the recs rooms or somebody from the press. Still can't get a hundred percent. All right, we need a motion to adjourn from executive session. Thank you, John Bennett. And do we have a second? Oh shoot, who said going in to? Bill? Bill? Katie, oh, here she comes. Was it Katie?
I just saw her pop. There she is. She's back.
You're muted right now. It's probably good because I can imagine what you're saying.
I'm so ready for COVID to be over.
I didn't think it was holiday appropriate language.
I second coming out of executive session.
Very good. All those in favor of exiting executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? No. All right, we are back into regular session for the city council and I ask council to consider the following resolution. Resolution to approve payment to Jessica Billings, a payment of $1,125 for management of payroll responsibility. Oh, Rick Van Donsel?
Resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract.
Resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract that will pay Jessica Billings an amount of $1,125 for managing payroll for CSEA employees during the 2020 year period. And then the next sentence, counsel also allows this continue at the rate of $125 a month into 2021 until not to exceed or go past the date of March 31st of 2021. Motion to consider, Katie Soliman, you're the second, John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before the council this evening? Seeing none, hearing none, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Kat McCarthy, second, Bill Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Have a safe and healthy end to your 2020 and we look forward to seeing everybody January 5th of 2021, our next council meeting.
Happy holidays.
Be safe, have good holiday.
Bye.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.